All right, you can go for it. Yep.
We're going to call a virtual meeting back in session just from yesterday. This time we'd like to, we asked the sheriff if he would be able to come today, and I know he's got a meeting, and we'd like to get sheriff on the agenda first here, so.
Good morning.
Good morning. Are we ready to go? This, are you aware of what, why the questions we had regarding your, I don't want to call it humane officer on the pay there?
Can you recap for me exactly what you want me to address?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you recap for me what it is you want me to provide?
Okay. Just one second.
Brady, is that mic on?
The issue was the, in the, in the ordinance, it was currently had them in civilian pole B at a rate higher than the classification would allow, and we were talking about moving them over to comat A, which has the right dollar amount, but we questioned the, questioned the definition of this person's job. So, that's where we're at, Brady.
Okay. Well, what we did was start the animal control officer position. It's a part-time spot. At the sheriff's office, we have a budget for the part-time. Within that budget, it breaks down a little bit more. There's subcategories to that budget. One of them is academy-trained officers, so that we have a part-time, someone that was a police officer, and we want to employ them part-time. They would meet that academy-trained account. Another one is a part-time jail officer. Another one is a part-time non-officer, someone that's working part-time at the jail. So, we have various people throughout these different categories of the part-time budget. So, when the animal control officer was hired, she was placed into the part-time budget underneath the qualified professional. I was doing some looking this morning, and it appears that those were created around 2017 or 2018. There's no job descriptions for any of those. There's no definitions for any of those. It's just in the salary ordinance as part-time and then titled as such, so.
And all those titles exist within the sheriff's department stuff, not within our actual salary ordinance?
That's correct.
They're on the ordinance, like the qualified professionals on the salary.
No, no, no. The, his part-time people, these categories he's talking about within the part-time, that's something that's in their, in their information that they have, but I don't know that it ever had it.
I'm positive that, under the sheriff, it says qualified professional.
As one category or as?
I mean, it shows as part-time, but it is listed there.
All of it? He's saying that in the-
I can tell you in a hot second.
He's saying in the part-time positions, he has people in-
Correct.
-a number of different areas.
Yeah, I know, but we had to, um, we had to separate some of them so that we knew what was what. So, on the salary ordinance, we have sheriff jail part-time officer, sheriff jail part-time non-officer, qualified professional, academy-trained certified road officer, evidence officer part-time. We have those all listed.
They're in the actual ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, there's no job descriptions for many of those, most of those. Those are the part-time positions. The other key thing, I think, is there's no definitions for those. The academy-trained officer, I think, is self-explanatory, someone that's been in the academy and trained. And then that qualified professional account is the one we're talking about this morning, I believe. So, with there being no definition or job description, that's why she was placed in that as a qualified professional. Given her experiences and training, she has a bachelor's degree in vet, veterinary technology. She's a registered vet tech. She worked for the Fort Wayne City Police Department as a full-time animal control officer for seven years. She's licensed to administer lethal drugs to animals for euthanasia when necessary. And she's also a special deputy and can investigate and file charges for animal cruelty, neglect, and those types of charges. So, just applying the common sense test to that, I put her in as a qualified professional thinking she would qualify for that. So, that's how she ended up at the pay rate where she's at.
Sheriff, she's a special deputy here in DeKalb County?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
She doesn't work for Fort Wayne any longer.
She does not, no. She retired for that, a few years ago, I believe, when she had children and stayed home for a brief period of time and wanted to get back. Moved to DeKalb County during that time and then wanted to get back into it, and so, and that's how it came about.
Does anybody else have any questions for the sheriff? Because I know he's late for a meeting right now.
Brady, is she working on an on-call basis then? Or is she maintaining hours?
It's kind of a hybrid. It's mostly on-call, but she can come on, like she'll come on and go to a follow-up. She had a call from last week.
Right.
So, but generally, it's on-call is what it is.
Rick, any more questions?
I, no, I was going to offer an amendment to the ordinance that we have. I was just looking up the number real quick. The, based on the fact that I believe that she's comat A-qualified with the different degrees and different certifications and licenses that she has, and the rate we're currently paying her is the 2349, which is the approved salary for comat A, I would amend this salary ordinance that we have before us to change the qualif, the category from civilian pole B to comat A.
So, basically, you're in agreement with the amendment that we have?
No, I'm changing it. I'm changing it from civilian pole-
I thought it was. Go ahead.
Civil, it currently with says civilian pole B. He is changing it to approve the part-time animal control officer position as a comat A.
Okay, I guess I was reading the small print below it there, and I thought that that was what the change was going to be, so.
The-
No, that was just info.
Okay.
And, and the issue that got us to this point anyway, the sheriff and HR and the commissioners have understood the issue that happened and that they, they will correct that in the future.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion then to change this, to amend this amendment to comat A?
I think that's what he just did.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay, you, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I made, I made the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Changes to comat A. I'll second it.
Okay, second by Bill Van Wy. Do we have any further discussion?
I don't, I don't know how, can that be changed in the future? What if the next person worked for the Fort Wayne Animal Control for 15 years but didn't get a bachelor's degree?
It wouldn't have to be, you won't have to put everything in.
Okay.
Probably, I would think, I would think, and you know, I'm gonna, I'm looking at the three of you because you're the HR committee, but I would think that the description right now probably did not require any of those, which got it a lower number. Right. So, if you're going to, if this is going to be the standard that you want, you would have to change the job description to add some qualifications, some licensure qualifications or a degree or something like that in order to elevate it.
Then it justifies that being that.
Aren't we then just kind of putting a Band-Aid over at this point and giving some grace of, hey, we're not going to follow the rules in this instance because it isn't convenient? I think the better, better plan of action would be go back, fix it, and then come back and then let us just move forward with that motion.
The, the fact of the matter is, we're paying her at this rate right now. I think it's time to-
Correct.
And-
I agree.
Correct it and know that in the future that it has to be handled in a different manner.
Well, I think your definition of correcting it and maybe others' definition of correcting it aren't the same, that she's being overpaid for a position, that we follow the process. We went to WIS, that's the process that we do, and to do something otherwise would then give the indicator like to other departments to say, yeah, if you forget or you don't know or you don't do it right, we'll just let it slide, and then we'll try to fix it later. I just don't agree. I just, I don't feel like this is the best process.
Well, hopefully-
That's my opinion.
Hopefully, we've paid enough attention to it and brought it to everybody's attention enough that nobody forgets it again.
Okay, so I have a question. Rick, motion to amend the ordinance. Did anybody second it before discussion?
Yeah, Bill Van Wy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm reading it currently to $1.36 an hour from the 23.
That's correct.
Please been in this position?
Since May.
And she is handling something that we thought previously was being handled by the humane shelter and the amount of money we were paying the humane shelter, but it was not. That's my understanding. And, and additionally, I mean, she, the humane shelter wasn't handling horses or other types of, of animals, just cats and dogs.
I guess for clarification, and maybe, I personally have had to call the humane shelter. Dogs running. If somebody calls the humane shelter, do they in turn call this person or how, what is the protocol for that? I mean, I'm not going to call 911 because dogs running by property or on the golf course, but I bet we call eight or 10 times a year. Where, where is the communication for, how should it be handled?
That's a good question. It's a new position, and we're getting it established. So, the animal control officer works for the sheriff's office, which would be, cover all the unincorporated areas in DeKalb County. If you live in Garrett and you call because there's a loose dog, the current protocol would be to dispatch the Garrett Police Department because that's their area. My animal control officer is available to assist any police agency. So, that's been put out to all the police agencies that if you need help with anything, and many of them do reach out. We've had some hoarding situations and pretty severe dog bites that she's handled for city departments. So, as the citizen, you don't have to really worry about too much who to call. You still call central communications, and they will then dispatch the appropriate person. So, if you have a loose dog, whatever it is, it would, as of right now, go to the Garrett Police Department. They would then either handle that call, or they could call the animal control officer and say, can you come help me with this, or can you take this? But because currently, those are their areas, it's, it's up to them on whether or not they, because they're with the sheriff's office. What I would like to do is make this position, as we're doing, make it available to anybody and everybody over the next year or two, and see how she's being used, which agencies are using her and which ones aren't. And then she is picking up things that the humane shelter was just not equipped to do, mostly these investigations that she's doing. But eventually, I'd be fine with her being, I think she would like to be full-time eventually and just be the animal control officer for the county. And then when calls come out, she's just working full-time. So, when there's a loose dog or an investigation that needs done wherever it is, when Auburn City Police Department or Garrett buys into it and they're okay, they give the blessing of, yeah, she's fine to handle any, any calls we have. I'd like to see if those city, cities would contribute a certain amount of money to help cover those expenses, but I want them to see the value of that before we approach them and say, hey, give us some money for this thing that might or might not work for you. So, I'd like to let that go for a little bit. Like I said, the, the part-time stuff, we're, we're able to cover that, those expenses for the time being, but, and then eventually, like I said, go approach those cities and ask for some contribution to cover some of these expenses we have. Okay. Yeah. Well, we haven't had an animal control officer for the counties, as far as I know, in, in recent history, and it's been absolutely phenomenal. I mean, she, her knowledge and experience has been great to educate me on some of those things, and things have come to the surface that, like euthanizing animals, you know, we had to pay a vet to do that a couple of times, but she's able, in the final stages of us storing those drugs for her to be able to do that, and we're working right now on what to do with those animals once they are euthanized, where do we take them, and how do, so we're working through some of those things still. So, that's why it's, it's kind of a work in progress and kind of getting off the ground.
Thanks, Brady, for talking about how it involved the cities. That was actually going to be my question that I had for you, and you answered it exactly what I was, was wondering, so appreciate you sharing that part of it with us.
It's, it's absolutely great. I can't say enough about her and her experience has been. It's, just makes it safer for the officers not to be dealing with animals that they're not familiar with, which sometimes leads to unsafe conditions for the animal or the officer. So, to have someone with the knowledge and the tools, we don't have the tools to do that, and it was always on us to do it as deputies, and she has the equipment, training, the experience. She's got a candle in her vehicle, so it's been a really good program so far. Yeah, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for the sheriff? Any further questions? Okay, we have before us, we have a motion. It's been presented and duly seconded here to amend the proposed amendment of ordinance 2025- OCC-8 from civilian pole B at 2349 to amend it to comat A at, I'm, I'm sorry, at 2349. So, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of amending the amendment, this is not approving the amendment, this is amending the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried six to one. Now, we need then to, on first reading, move ordinance 2025- OCC-8 along on first reading. And Susan, correct me if I'm not presenting this correctly. So, the amended ordinance that's proposed is from the sheriff, part-time animal control officer, moving it to comat A and pay it's $23.49. So-
Did we have a motion approving this on first reading yesterday?
No. We tabled it today. So, okay, do I have a, a motion to approve this on first reading?
So moved.
Okay, who made it? Rick Collins? Okay, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2025- OCC-8 on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Motion is approved, six to one. Now, do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
No move.
Okay, Rick Ring, motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Bill Van Wy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion is approved. Now, let's look at approving, approving ordinance number 2025- OCC-8 on second and third reading. Do we have a motion to do that?
Make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick Ring. A second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bill Van Wy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Motion is carried six to one. Thank you, sheriff.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Brady.
Thank you. Okay, so we're, that ordinance is done. Now, we're going to move back to our work where we left off yesterday on the budget. And we'll start with, do we want to start with the plan commission? The plan commission? Yeah, maybe we did.
I think we're waiting for probation.
Probation, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, probation. Everybody have their papers on probation there? Yeah. So. Okay, let's take a look at the probation department, and Michael, thank you for coming in. Okay, you've got an increase in Ryan's pay. Would you want to go over that, Michael? Have you got a minute or not?
They're going to look like increases because they would have advertised for the full amount last year, but then it would have went down because grants paid for the rest of it, which is the same as this year. We advertised for the full amount, but then we are reducing the county general by almost $280,000 because their grants have come back to approve those wages that we know about right now.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
If I can give you a general, the only officer increases that you'll find at all, our, our pay is based on a salary schedule voted on by Indianapolis down south. Tell us what you can and can't pay. There was no increase, there was zero increase for my officers. The only people you will find an increase for are those who hit one of the stair steps. That's it. That, where they go from years of experience. So, I have no ability to change that amount. I have to, to keep them licensed to the state, so those are the only people you see increases for at all, other than that. And, and to, just to echo what Susan says, yeah, I have a lot of them in county general that you never paid for. They're all paid for through the grant, but to guarantee that we have the space to, to honestly, just to be nimble, because the grants are due at a certain time. I'm required to complete a budget, but I don't actually have the answer for the grants. I have them now, but I didn't at the time I had to fill this out. So, we like to put, put them in both so we have the ability to be nimble to move money around, to, to keep all those people employed. But, yeah, all the grants came in at levels that we had been able to predict, so.
Hey, thank you, Michael.
Uh-huh.
Anybody else in the council have any questions for Michael?
In other words, my question, who can tell me? So, you, you're not involved in this 3% wage or anything like that that we're giving, or 2%, whatever we give the rest. Your wages are going to be flat, right?
To my knowledge, that would be a decision up to you, but not, not with my request. I follow the state every year. I know there's a lot of other probation departments out in the, in the state trying to, you know, to ask for different things, but I, I think every chief in DeKalb County has walked in here, looked at you, and said, please follow the salary schedule, and I think that on years that there's a large increase, I know that that's a big ask, so when there's years that there's not one, I think that's just something we have to deal with. And so, I'm not making, I'm not making any request that you do anything larger than that, no.
The only ones that would be involved in that would be the bookkeeper, the office manager, and office administrator. Those are not regulated by the state.
Correct.
Those would be, those would follow our wage increases.
Yep.
It's just those three, right?
That's correct.
And then that also includes your officers that are involved in the community corrections?
Yeah, that's correct, but I believe they, they're in the community corrections budget, but, yeah, they all went up a stair step, so they look like they got an increase, but they're all just stair steps because of their years of experience, not because of any increase.
How many does he, how many do you have out there?
Out, in community corrections, four total, including director, three officers and the director, and then interior, we have 13. That, but that's two divisions. If you look at all three divisions, it's 17 total, including myself.
Thank you.
When we were looking at the community corrections budget, a question came up about providing them with additional funding from the county general, and I think comment was made that we couldn't do it because of the way that the budget was advertised. And I don't know if we can, we can do this, as it's been explained to me that while we don't advertise by department, we advertise by category. We can move money from personnel to personnel or supplies to supplies, whatnot, but we can't move supply money to personnel or personnel money down to supplies. I believe that is, am I not correct, Susan?
That is correct. The only other thing that can be done is you can plan X amount of dollars for them, but then come January, I would need to do an additional appropriation for X, whatever you decide, so that we can get it into the correct categories.
You know, and I, as we've been advised in the past by the DLGF, although it was a previous DLGF, doing additionals is a bad thing. It, it looks like bad planning. I would much rather do it now rather than later.
Right.
I did have one clarification. I was wrong. I, I do have what would be considered five administrative people. I have the three upstairs. I also have two POAs, probation officer assistants. They are not governed by the state. They have a different title, only because we have them doing something that WIS doesn't even take into consideration, which is collecting urine drug screens.
Is that Evans and?
Evans and Penny Belisle. Kayden Evans and Penny Belisle.
Is that B E L something?
B E L L I.
Okay, got it.
B E L I L.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Rick, with what you said here about transferring, does that prevent us from doing IT that's in the probation department, moving it to another depart, to the, back to the IT department?
That question needs to be directed at Susan. She knows the rules.
We can't, if we wanted to take on and pay the 30-some thousand of IT that got added to their budget, we could, we can't.
You can't because it's a different fund.
Yeah, two different departments.
Yeah, it's a different fund. Well, and they're different funds. Had we had the IT expenses in community corrections general, then we could, because that category of general would not, the bottom line would not be changing, but I can't take it from their grant funds and put it into county general because that wasn't advertised that way.
So, an additional qualification, categories and funds.
It's complicated.
So, the only way we could do anything would be in January, we'd have to give them an additional out of general to pay that. Can't do it in the budget.
If it's something besides wages. Now, if you chose to do X amount of dollars more in a wage for community corrections, we could put another wage amount in county general, and then in next year, then she would just transfer, do a transfer from her IT expenses wherever she needed it. That could be an option.
Gives her a better understanding and Michael a better understanding of where, where they're, where they're at come January 1.
If she was saying now, you could put more in wages now.
I can add wages to community corrections in the general fund now. Then her grant fund would, we would technically be taking away X amount of dollars from one of her wage lines, and then she would transfer from her services account up to her- And then she would transfer from her services account up to her wage lines next year. The IT budget would most likely have to just come ask for an additional next year for however much we're doing.
That's probably.
Once we get towards the end of the year or whatever, I mean, a lot of times.
Navigation and follow the rules.
Yeah, a lot of times, I mean, you know, for IT, it's just a guess anyways on a lot of their software agreements and whatnot, so.
We'd do pretty good at staying away from additionals. I wouldn't be afraid of having her come to us during the year when she knows more of where they're at and, you know, asking for it then, and as an additional. I mean, just remember, we've got to remember back to this conversation and.
Because we have long memories. Anybody else have any questions here on the probation budget? Excuse me. The, the additional for training for their juvenile probation officer, that is in this budget, correct?
The what?
They're going to, they're going to hire, they're going to need to hire somebody to train their retiring juvenile probation person. Is that, is that?
He's got a replacement employee amount in here, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Michael?
Right now, we're frozen. I don't know how long I can keep that going. We pay that out of, out of $2,000 probation user fee budget, so the money we collect goes right back out to that, which collections are up overall. That's a very large portion of what we collect, $75,000, $80,000. We do use some grant funds for that. Right now, we're frozen. The difficulty is, I think I explained it before, we're using the best out there in the country. And it's turnaround time and what you can support in court and everything else. So we really do like them. We use them across the board. So finding another company that can do that is difficult. But yeah, they've been good to us so far, but someday they'll stop. Right now, we got them froze. I don't know if we have a date for that. Yes. Yeah, so we're, yeah, 3/25, but we're waiting. Ryan usually takes care of that for me with the contract, but yeah, it'll come up and get us on. Yeah, we look at new stuff like that all the time. You know, new versions, new collection types, new ways to save money, different processes. But right now, we're at the, we're using the best one out there to make sure that we're providing the best level of service, both for the judiciary and those who are being served, so.
Unless things have changed dramatically since I was involved in doing this, one of the big expenses is not, the big expense is not the collection, is not the sending of the sample off for testing, but it's the liability that the tester has and the ability to provide someone to testify in court that has credentials on how, what the process was. That's, it's all potential exposure is really the big deal and why the price keeps going up. Even though you might not ever call anybody to testify. But in years past, we had lab techs coming in and testifying on drug screens or blood draws that were done, got totally discombobulated on the stand and totally wrecked whatever prosecution they were trying to make because of the person that was doing the testifying. So back when Monty Brown was prosecutor, we switched all of that over to a more, to a different company.
And we have to be able to, for true accountability and ability to help with addiction, you have to be able to measure everything out there. So if you could find the people who are inventive enough to continue to invent new drugs and stop them from doing that, we would also spend a lot less money if there was a limited amount of what we have to test for. But they're always coming up with something new, more ingenious. So we have to stay, we have to stay up to date on all those trends. And Abbott Labs is the top one out there for that, so.
Do we have any of the opioid settlement money coming in to pay for some of these drug screens now?
Drug screens is one of the things that after the first year, they decided they will not support. I don't know why. It was, it was one of the reasons, when opioid money was first discussed, we thought that, you know, we would be able to build, we'd be able to use some of that money just to start that account, okay? Just use one flat amount. We would test people. Obviously, with probation comes requirements to pay for the services which you're involved in, so they would replenish that account. After the first year, for some reason, the state decided paying for those is not part of what they want. They generally make some caveats to their opening, but it's usually law enforcement, like they don't want it to be used for buy money, for undercover operations or things of that nature. But they also added drug screens. I'm not really sure why. But then again, you know, I'm not on those. We're much closer to moving forward with opioid funds. We had a full, we have three area, Garrett, Butler, Auburn have all agreed to make it one large pool. So all that money will come in at once. J-Rac will have a larger board. They're talking about adding some external portions to J-Rac, like somebody from education and emergency services so that we can maybe do that. And then it'll, it'll be allowed through another grant process so that everybody inside the county, regardless of where they're from, will have the ability to provide a program that they really want or believe should be sustained by that. There's a lot of reasons that that's beneficial to us or to Cal County period. One, because I think a lot of jurisdictions have not followed the rules with how they're dealing, passing it out. It requires to have a report that talks about what your main goals are, which we've done here in Cal County through the SIM project. And then we will be able to take a look at all those goals and then be able to go through a very open board and have everybody, any organization or come out and talk about what great program they think that they can run from that and then go through a board and have that approved. And with that, the process also requires that they come back with some financial accountability and some form of metric that they can show us whether what they were doing works or doesn't work. Because that opioid money goes out for like 18 plus years. So we have a long period of time to deal with that.
Any other questions for Michael?
If I could just make one statement, and I know that you all probably know this about probation as well as community corrections, but the budget that they have to submit to us as early as we ask for it, and then the number of times that not only probation, but community corrections has to adjust those numbers, we just got the numbers back on what was approved, like Michael said. It is so time consuming and it is so much data, and they really do a phenomenal job of trying to get as many dollars as they can. So it's very much appreciated, especially with what they work with in our office and what we're submitted. So we really appreciate it.
Us as well. You know, when you need directions, things like, I do have an officer with 30 years' experience with a plan to retire at the end of next year. Impossible to replace, but I've requested, as long as I thought was humanly possible, to get a replacement in there. And their auditor's office immediately responsive to helping make sure that I found a way to get that into my budget so that I could, I could request that help to make sure that our juvenile department is, stays with their head above water.
Any further questions for Michael? Thanks, Jody. Thank you for all your work you do and thanks for sharing that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions on probation? We have Michelle here from community corrections. She's here just to answer any questions the council may have. So if, does anybody have any questions for Michelle on community corrections?
How old are you? About where you stay?
I'm normally a little closer to 30 at a time.
My other question, how many of them go back to jail or how many of them get released? Do you know?
Are you asking just about the residential?
Yeah.
Sorry, ma'am. You're fine.
I mean, I just want to know what kind of turnover they got on it and everything.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I'm going to, I actually brought our last annual report with me, so I'm going to open it up so I can give you the exact. What we like to do in the annual report is actually run percentages of each of our programs to say what level of success we have. And actually, it's fairly high for a criminal justice program. So in 2024, for the residential work facility, we had 81% success rate. They do have the ability, when they're in the program, to work their way through the phases. And then they can transition out to home detention. If they have an appropriate place to live, they can show us on a budget that they can afford it. And we talk about some other things. What's your support system going to be? What's your transportation? Just want to make sure we're not, you know, releasing them into a situation where they're just going to end up coming back because we didn't have basic stability figured out. So last year, we had 13 people that transitioned out. A lot of people that come into the program actually aren't there long enough to transition. It's only about 22% that are there long enough to make it through every phase and have that opportunity. And so 13 of them did transition out. And then we had 81% success rate amongst all, whether they stayed for their whole time or they transitioned.
Where does the money you collect go to? Does that go back to general?
That goes into our project income. That's by statute. And so when you're looking at our budget, you'll see there's a column for grant and there's a column for project income, and that's where all that money is coming from. It's our user fee collections, money we collect from drug screening, the classes that we offer, all the participants in those classes pay a fee to participate in classes.
And you have a pretty good rate of collecting your money from the outlaws?
Last year, we were at 95% collection.
Thank you.
And we did start the Trex program this year. We actually missed the big tax season, I guess you would say. By the time we had our agreements done and everything, we joined probably after most people had their tax returns. But we've actually had some hits over the summer already for that, and we've collected 400 and some dollars, I think, after tax season by using the Trex system. So I'm assuming next year, when we get, when we have it operational throughout February and March, that we're going to see a higher collection from those past delinquent fees.
And what is, what is the Trex system?
Oh, are you asking me what it stands for? It stands for.
No, I don't, I don't want to know what the acronym is.
Okay, good.
What are they doing?
So Trex is a program that the state started where if you owe to a government agency, and it's a lot of different agencies, and then they list them in order of priority, I guess. We are farther down the list, but if you don't owe to any of the ones that are above us, eventually the state tax return money or lottery winnings, as I understand it, will trickle down to whoever you might owe money to on that list. So for those who haven't paid their fees before they left our program, for whatever reason, we can turn them into the Trex system. And then when they have a state tax return, they will hit, they will tell us. We verify that, yes, we're saying this is the right person and they still owe us the money. And then that money will be collected and sent to us after the IRS takes out a fee and the clearinghouse takes out a fee.
It's a tax refund interception. The treasurer uses it also.
Which is translated, we get our money.
Yes. And there's effort right now. Right now, it only includes state tax returns. There is effort going on trying to get the feds added to that, so. Which is probably the larger dollar amount.
Absolutely.
That would be returned.
Michelle, I said under my breath and mumbled, so I want you to be clear because I saw your head turn. When you said 81% success, I did say phenomenal. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, that I was mumbling when I said that. Because that's, I expected that number to be far, far less than that, far less than that. I mean, we know in drug rehab centers and all that, those numbers are below 20% in some cases. So to see those kind of numbers is really actually incredible.
And a lot of the program that we have in place is kind of geared towards that, right? I mean, we're not, when we're working with the clients that come through our program, we are not looking at, you know, you make one mistake and we're going to be done and you're going to be out of the program. We have different, different systems and different layers set up so that we can try to help them work through that. Like, you made this mistake. Let's talk about what was your thought pattern? Why did you make that mistake? How can we help you not do that again? We talk to them about all kinds of, everybody's different. So whether it's, you know, anger management problem, whether it's self-defeating, whether they like to play the victim, there's all different things that we kind of work through them with because those decisions they make that violate our program are the same decisions that have them committing crimes when they're back out into the community. And so if we can help them work through the threat processes, the theory being that they make better decisions overall and hopefully we don't see them again.
Similar to what our drug court and our veterans courts are doing.
Exactly, yep.
And they're seeing greater successes because they are hanging in there with them when they trip.
Yeah.
Giving them some marks to stay in the program as opposed to ditching them immediately out of the program.
Right. And on those, you know, systems we have in place and the evidence-based practices that we're trying to do, those are the things that really set community supervision apart from what we used to do in the criminal justice system, which was just, we're going to take a person, we're going to lock them up for a period of time, and then when they come out, somehow we expect them to be different. But we haven't offered them anything to help them do that, right? So our whole goal is how can we help them overcome bad habits that they've gained or childhood experiences, never having anyone have told them how they should be living, never having completed anything or had anybody believe in them. And if we can start to show them there's a different way to do it, then hopefully we can turn around some of the, I guess, deficiencies they have in their decision-making and their problem-solving skills. And that's really what we're set up to do in different fashions. So whether it's, they need a little more intensive supervision so they get to come stay with us at the residential facility, they're going to be on home detention so that we have more control over where they can and can't go while they learn to make better decisions. Or sometimes they're placed on probation because the courts have made the decision that it's possible for them to make better decisions with less supervision. Come in, do your treatment, do things that we're expecting you to do, answer questions, have conversations, and hopefully that's enough. Sometimes that doesn't work, and so we'll actually see somebody move for a probation onto home detention or into residential because we've realized maybe they did need that little bit extra supervision. They've been violating and not been able to follow the rules they were given on probation.
While you certainly can't answer this with 100% certainty, the majority of the people that you have in the residential program, if it wasn't for the residential program, most likely would have ended up being in the jail and filling that number and costing the county quite a bit more because not only are we housing them, but we're also paying for all their medical care and everything else, so.
Right.
The community corrections is a, is a great asset to the county.
Right. It's, I wouldn't want to speak for the judges, obviously, but when we talk about criminal sentencing, we have what we call executed sentences and we have suspended. So if you're placed on probation, you're on a suspended. If you behave, do what you're asked to do during your executed time. When people are placed in the residential work facility or on home detention, they're actually serving executed time. They're just doing it in an alternative fashion to being at the jail or the prison. So without putting words in anyone's mouth on their sentencing decisions, I would say that when they're serving with us, that is an expectation of an executed sentence. So that was the decision that they needed an executed sentence, but we're deciding if they're eligible and have the ability to do it in an alternative fashion. So I would say that's a good assumption to make in general, that they would have spent their time in jail or prison, yes.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Let's take a look at prosecute. Does anybody need a break right now? We're good? Okay, let's take a look at the prosecutor.
Do you want to come back and revisit community corrections later? If you're adding to general or taking away or?
We want to do that? We can, we can do it now? Yeah. Let's do that.
Okay, so it looks like there is $30,504 in the software maintenance that she has in her project income area. And so if you want, wanted to add that amount into a wage area in county general, then I can do that and then they can just do a transfer next year, which a transfer probably would be easier for them probably would be easier for them with all the reporting they have to do to IDOC. And then, if IT would need extra money, then we would just take care of that additional mid-year, end of next year through the normal County General additional process.
Sorry, Susan, I missed that first part.
That's okay.
You said-
So, there's thirty thousand five oh four that she has budgeted in project income for software maintenance, and I believe we were wanting to take that amount and put it back into the IT budget. So then-
You're talking about prosecutor?
No, community corrections.
Okay, sorry, I heard somebody say prosecutor.
That's okay.
Gotcha. Wonder I'm lost.
So then, then Michelle would just do, like, for instance, if we decided to pay the thirty thousand five oh four of account eleven four thirty-five deputy probation officer, they're needing fifty-two oh four three, but if we pay thirty, the thirty thousand value at a County General, then she would just have her thirty thousand in her software maintenance she would have to be able to transfer wherever she would need it next year.
We don't think that would mess up her grant at all that we're providing that, and then next year they go-
It's not in the grant, it's in the project income fund.
Okay, so it's in the project income, so they're not gonna look at that and go, oh, you got that.
Right.
Last year-
Not in, right.
The general is gonna-
Right.
I don't get locked into paying that wage, I'd rather get locked into paying-
Yeah.
Are we picking up the wage because she's not gonna have enough money in the budget, in her own budget? I'm sorry, I missed-
We're- So her request to you guys was to put the IT expense for software maintenance back to the IT budget as it had been prior years. It's been in community corrections budget for a few years now, and so her, that was her request, was, would you be willing to put that back to County General? So if you're willing to put that back to County General to help out her funding, then we can do that now by paying, by paying thirty thousand for her wages, because the wage category is the category that was advertised high, not knowing what you guys were gonna do with increases. So I have the ability to change wage category in County General.
As long as you're doing it project income, it doesn't really affect the grant?
Correct.
What's the will of the council on doing this?
I, I believe it's necessary. I think, I think the community corrections is an important department and provides us with a lot of other savings. I, I would not want to see this department shorted. And if we can do it now, you know, if we can do it through this, I mean, I'm sure there were easier ways if it didn't have all the different rules, but if this is how we have to do it, then I'm all for it.
If we do it now, then we don't, next year, do we have to follow suit and do the same, or do we, or this will take care of it in the future?
The next budget cycle?
Yeah.
What you mean? The next budget cycle, then we would just make sure that she didn't have it on hers and that IT knew to add it to theirs.
Right. We would still have to do an additional appropriation for the IT department if they need it.
If they need it.
If they need it.
If they need it.
It's not, it's not a given.
Do you want to make a mo, you want to make a motion?
Wait, Amy's got quite, just a second. I can tell she's got questions.
So, I guess my concern is this, we've continued to see that the state is cutting community corrections funding, I think it was by fifty thousand ago, and now nine percent. And so we're starting to see ourselves continually adding, picking up more from these budgets. I don't foresee that going away. That's probably going to increase next year unless the state decides to give us additional dollars. And so, I think if we start down this path, then we have to realize we may be committed to continuing to fund bigger and bigger chunks of community corrections.
And I made, I tried to make that point yesterday, Amy, that's exactly what's gonna happen. I mean, there's no, I don't think that's up in the air as it could or could not. It is going to happen, and I think we just need to accept that, but we need to accept it based on this is a positive program for our citizens and our expenses, because if these people end up back in the jail, then we're gonna need a bigger jail, the people don't get any kind of education, or, you know, right now, they're doing a lot of, they're spending a lot of time trying to change people's lifestyle and choices, which is a benefit for us.
While keeping them working in their-
Yeah, while they're continuing to work, so absolutely.
Yeah, which-
I guess I'm just conflicted because I, we spent a lot of time talking yesterday about, you know, things could get a lot worse. Maybe, we don't know what the future holds as far as state dollars, and are we ready to commit to picking up this, this, this piece, this entire department possibly, when we had discussions yesterday just about, well, what about, you know, we take a couple of hundred thousand here and put it towards roads? Well, that was not a good idea, but now this is a good idea. So I'm just not sure-
I have a better idea.
Where this all falls, and how do we look at this going forward of, this isn't gonna be the first time we're gonna do this, and are we prepared as a council to say, yeah, community corrections, we'll take on your entire budget in the next couple of years, and are we prepared to do that financially? If I listened to the discussion yesterday, it was, there's no way we can do that, but I don't know.
I, I don't think that taking the whole budget on in the next few years is, is a possibility.
That's what you would just alluded to.
It's, it is going to become a-
But that's what you just said, correct.
And quite honestly, we have to, we have to, as a council, make a decision on what kind of a county do we want to have. What kind of a county, what kind of services do we want to have, and if we want IDA, uh, good services, if we want efficient services, we've got to pay for them. That's the bottom line. We got to pay for them, so.
In this situation-
This is one that is worthwhile.
In this situation, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other. The person breaks the law, they get a jail sentence, you're paying for that one way or the other. You're putting them in jail, which is one cost, which is probably up here.
Right.
Or you're sending them community corrections. You have to pay for that person.
Or we're sending them to somebody else's jail.
Yeah, and so, it's not like we have a choice.
Right.
Yeah, so you're gonna pay one or the other.
Yep.
I, I'm not arguing that point. I understand that we have to do something with him. I'm just saying, we're on a path that we are going to end up, and like you said, Rick, you said that yesterday, we are on that path. That's what you alluded to, that we will eventually take over community corrections and begin to pay for all of it. So, I'm, I want to make sure we're all aware that this isn't just a thirty thousand dollars for next year. This, we may be on the path to doing more in the future.
We've also paid for this software in the past for many years, and only in the last two years have they paid for this.
I have an easier way.
Okay.
So, if you just cut the thirty thousand whatever from the project income, leave everything else the same, just cut it from there, then if we, and then to put it into IT, I can add that amount into one of their, like, their part-time account for payroll so that we don't have to do an additional, and then, next year, they can transfer that thirty thousand to their software maintenance account. So-
Who can transfer?
IT.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be-
Is what?
We wouldn't be taking on any more of the wages.
And, and-
So I guess we need to decide, do we want IT to pay for software maintenance or not? That's the question.
I believe that we have probably enough savings that we can cover this thirty thousand dollars this year. I'm not opposed to doing that. I like community corrections. Though it's coming off from several people making comments that I don't. Not true. Don't put words in my mouth. I like community corrections. I'm simply stating, we're heading down a path, and I just want to make sure we're all aware that that path could be very expensive.
And it, but it'd be more expensive if you build, have to build a bigger jail and take care of those people, to pay a hundred percent of their-
I'd like to see the data, but I probably agree with you, but I think the day we need to-
And it's not just community, community corrections, it could be probation grants that go away. Any of those state grants are always in question, so-
Correct.
Yeah, it's, you're not just singling out community corrections. It's those grants that we just have to remember might be coming our way.
As they're trending, as they're trending now, which can also-
Correct.
Can also mean that they can also trend back the other way.
Correct.
When the next set of lawmakers-
Exactly.
Say, oh my gosh, this is a great, you know, statewide program, and, and we've got to do something-
Right.
-to address this. Sometimes, when it hurts more, they address it. Right now, they don't feel the hurt of it-
Right.
-on that level.
And maybe they'll improve so much that we can build a smaller jail, even better.
Right?
No kidding.
Looking, looking at all that we're responsible for, it is, it is the, in my, in my belief, it is the opinion of the legislature that counties need to help themselves. They, you know, that they're, they're, don't look to Indianapolis for the, the pot of gold, that if you want something, whether it's roads or anything else, you need to, you need to be taking care of those issues as much as you can on your own. Now, the County Council Association has been working for a number of years in trying to get the state, initially, it was to take over the, all of the court expenses. We don't have the problem with our courts that some counties do, that are, where they're being mandated to make higher salaries and things like that available, but that, that's how it started, and now it's flipped over to getting the state to take over the probation departments and pay for those in full, and I think that there's still work being done on that. Whether or not that happens in the next year or two, I don't know, but it is still a priority for the County Council Association to make that happen. So, it could, you know, looking at what Rick has just said, it could flip the other way, and that they could take over other expenses. In, quite honestly, in the, in community, in central communications, the nine-one-one board is looking at taking over some of the expenses that we have statewide through central communications. So they are taking on some other things. So it, it is gonna web and ebb and flow, but, you know, Amy makes a good point. This is something that we're gonna be dealing with through everything that we do.
It is, and, and just to back up, we, we, we've talked about this for several years. What if these grants go away?
Yeah.
And we've seen them slowly starting to be reduced here. There's a good chance we may wind up picking this up, and I think we have to be cognizant of that, and I think we're putting money back in different areas where, if push comes to shove, we'll survive on that, but it may not, but-
Survive or cut deep?
Huh?
Survive or cut deep into-
True, but with reelections coming up, I think you're gonna have a lot of state legislators taking a look at a lot of this stuff here, real hard for reelection here, but it's always an option out there. These state and federal grants could disappear. Rick, what do we want to do? What's your, do you want to make a motion now to strike this out?
We don't, wait, we don't need to do the motion now. At the end, you guys do a motion to approve all changes that had been discussed during these days.
And this, I, I'm going to look to Amy first on this, because this, you know, this is one of the departments she represents, but I like this last suggestion that Susan made as being the easiest, but-
I, I mean, I'm in agreement, whatever is the easiest and, and, well, I won't even go there.
Less pain.
Whatever's the easiest for a transfer.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'd agree with it, and consensus from the council. Okay, good. What we'd like to do is, let's take five minutes, and when we come back, I'd like to go to the health department next. So-
You're not-
We're in recess.
You're not feeling well?
Pardon? We're back in session. We'd like everybody to take a look at the health department next.
You should. Yeah, we gave them back to you.
Yeah, I think it was paperclip with a couple other ones there.
Did you find it, Amy?
Okay.
Was the health department getting all of the funding that they had, all the grants, those kind of things, same as last year? Was there any cuts that we need to look at?
They are not getting.
We're going to absorb for them.
They're not getting all of their HFI funding. They're only getting, last year they got eight hundred and forty-six thousand, two sixty-six. This year, they're only getting two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two thirty-two.
So, I'm sorry, you said?
Yeah. Eight forty-six, two sixty-six.
Okay.
And this year, two twenty-six, two thirty-two.
The program, I mean, the big presentation a year ago to adopt.
Yeah, we call it, they refer to it as HFI funding. Yeah, Health First Indiana, I would think is what it is.
And they didn't take it all away. They took away ninety percent of it.
They took away, yeah. They didn't take all of it, but they took a lot of it.
And when they were here for their July presentation, they gave us all this packet that had all of that in it, like it breaks.
Which is not unusual to get a program going, fund it, and then.
Drop it.
Drop it and dump it on the counties.
Well, if you, if you remember, when it was making its way through the legislature, it was controversial. And at least in our region, I believe it was two different counties refused to take the money that first year. But they did join the second year. Wabash and I think Wells was the other one.
We were, we were aware that that potentially could be the case when we accepted it.
Right. Yeah, it was, it was, it was well-known. And I think that if the state budget improves, some of that money may be restored in the twenty-sixth legislature. If the state budget doesn't improve, it's very unusual for them to open the budget up and add anything. So, but I know that it's already been talked about. One of the things that I wanted to point out, that we, we, we've discussed it in the past, but we did make an error when we made a general, very large wage increase a couple of years ago that was due to helping the managers within the department. We accidentally apparently gave huge, huge raises to even the staff nurses. And so, they would be over what I would consider to be the standard wage for nurses at that, at that level. So, I think that those nurses should be frozen at their current wage level, at least for one more year, because they did get a huge, huge raise a couple of years ago. And.
So, that would have been the category PATC. And so, that wouldn't have just, it would have been anybody in PATC. So, there would have been, I think there was somebody in Title IVD also that was included in that.
And so, that would continue, carry over to that person also.
Let's see, two of them is gonna retire here, I think. Well, in front of you, the application for funding paper like this, we've gone through it. I've talked to the nurses. I've gone through everything. And I'd like to propose that I think the county should keep some of these programs going in case the state comes back. She's, Cheryl's put a lot of work in. She's got a lot of positive feedback. There's things that we don't need. But she's asked me to see if we can get some extra funding to keep some of these programs going. I know it's, it's quite a bit of an ask. Anyway, and I want everyone to look at and think what you say, think, tell me what you think. I know some of you have said that you don't wanna be in the health deal, but I think for our community, and we, and we had the lady in here a minute ago, that, you know, some of these people do not know what to do when they get to be adults and stuff in a basic ways, what I'm saying. And, and if you listen to Cheryl, there's a lot of things that goes on that I can't believe that is possible. I know we don't wanna raise other people kids, but sometimes that's what these programs do. So, I'm just wanting to see what anybody says.
You know, what, I mean, of the, we got some health or the.
Yeah.
Extra money. Is, is that reflected in these upper lines that are more internal? We're gonna support some of the internal programs that the health department has with that? So, we're not losing all of those too, right?
If you look on your.
Mostly just losing the external things?
Yeah.
If you look on the second page, the back, the back of the first page.
Yeah.
Last two lines, and then the next page, most of the lines where you see all those subgrants, those are.
Right.
The ones that they're referring to.
But she was able to keep, like, some of the extra, I mean, she had an extra staff, I think, and she had a lot of extra programs and stuff going internally, outreach programs for shot, all kinds of things.
Yeah.
Smoking cessation, different things she was doing.
Yeah. And, and the thing, and some of them's, you know, she had said, like, the programs, and she's texted me, the programs at the high, uh, high schools is the ones she did not wanna lose, because that's where they've gained the most. They've gotten the most positive feedback. And the other one was, you know, the St. Martin's healthcare, where they can help some of the poor people that's uninsured and everything. She don't wanna lose that. They really didn't wanna lose anything, but that's what they've kind of told me as far as they go, everything. And children-first center and stuffs. And I know we got some money there, but to get where we need to be. And, and, and she is hopeful, and I don't know how hopeful she is, that if we get through this year, and she realized if we get through this year and they don't pick it up, it's done. I said we can try to support one year. I didn't know whether we could or not. But if the state gonna come back and say, hey, this is what I do. And the thing of it is, this all started out as Marion County, the one that wanted it, Marion, Gary, the northern counties, 'cause the, uh, uh, the inner-city kids. And that's where it grew from. And, and he said to two counties, and the reason we held back on it is, they had, the first ones that came out was, you had to be there, not quite at conception, but almost, and follow that through the prenatal. Then you had to follow it from, from birth all the way up until high school. And you had to keep records of it. This, and that kinda died down, because they realized you don't have the manpower to do something with that many kids.
Well, people are transient. They.
Yeah.
In and out.
So, that's what started the whole deal. And then it's came to where we use what comes in and what information we get from the high schools and what people need help. And there's, and there's people coming in there to have their, I don't know, health checks or whatever you wanna call it and everything all the time.
Well, I know that, you know, we have a number of health issues. While we don't have the infant mortality issue as much as some other areas, we do have issues with mental health. I would like to continue to support those programs, especially within the schools. St. Martin's provides a wonderful service to our county residents that cannot afford healthcare or don't have insurance, whatnot. I would like to continue to support the Northeast Center and the schools. Garrett and, Garrett was a partner, the Purdue University Extension Office and their mental health education program, and the Soil and Water Conservation District. That septic system cost share program, looking at the environmental side of things, if we can, you know, if we need, if people need improvements with septic systems, it, it's to our advantage to keep the water clean throughout the county. So, those are ones that I would like to see supported. There are some on here that those organizations have enough money, they don't need our tax money. But those that are not-for-profit, well, wait, I better, I gotta step that one back a little bit. Some of our not-for-profits have enough money, they don't need our money. But others would be, should be eligible, I would think.
You wanna just go start at the top on that list, Rick? I, I just wanna kind of put a check mark by the ones that you're talking about.
The ones that I'm, and, you know, this is, this is actually, you know, Bill's asked, but the ones that I've already marked that I would like to see continued, the council on aging, Garrett Kaiser Butler School District, Who's Your Feeding the Hungry, Northeast Center, Purdue University Extension Office, or their perinatal mental health education program, Soil and Water District, St. Martin's. And I've even, and included the Y and the Jam Center, and forty thousand dollars for the supplies for the school nurses. That totals out at two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four ninety-six.
I will say, I was on these committees, served on two different committees on there. And the, the school nurse supply thing, they go through it like that. You guys would be shocked. I mean, there's, kids don't have access to a lot of things that normal families would have.
Well.
And they, it, it's amazing how fast they have to, I mean, hygiene products, female things, I mean, just, girls don't even have those. And so, they just go through that very, very rapidly, that budget.
We can't base things on what would happen within our own situation. But just the number of people that are on free lunch, that, that designates a poverty level or a, a level where I think help is needed.
Yeah, I also would add the children-first center, too. That's one we disagreed on, but that would be one I'd put on.
Children's First Center and St. Martin's, I think, are both outstanding. I mean, Children's First Center, my granddaughter, for three years, got free therapy as a disabled handicap person with Down Syndrome. And St. Martin's is, is truly giving healthcare to those who have no healthcare. I mean, it's, and they get full services, pretty much, even dental at St. Martin's.
No, and I know that everybody's got a lot of issues for where the St. Martin's savings should, or this Sunny Meadows savings should go. But that's money that we've already dedicated to citizens of the Kelp County. And I think this is just a moving that money over to this, these programs, because we do want a healthy county. And, you know, that's one of our biggest, one of our biggest issues is our health status.
Did you read those from this handout?
No, I read it from the one that was stapled to the.
This large one?
Yeah, that one. You got it in your hand.
Okay.
No, the, the. Okay, well, the eight and a half by eleven sheet.
This one, Amy.
I was looking at the spreadsheet, and there were a couple that he mentioned were not on the map.
Sure, I was, too. That's why, we were trying to figure out the exact same thing.
You start on the back of the second page.
Yep.
The last two, St. Martin's and Parkview, is that the one we're referring to?
I have a question.
That's the list we're referring to, the back of the second page, St. Martin's, Parkview, that's the beginning of that list you were working off of.
No money to Parkview.
Well, no, I'm just saying that's where you were starting at, that's...
Well, I didn't read it from the eight and a half, I was reading it from this list.
Okay, all right, with you.
The 226,000 that they are receiving, where have they decided to put those dollars? Do we know?
They're not in there, that's what she had come asking the...
She could actually take that 226 and apply it to some of the programs that they are referencing.
I can't give it to them.
No, she has the 226 allocated.
That'll be her own budget.
So...
That'll be...
The 1161 fund. So she is, that's where she's paying for the community, the school nurse and benefits, and then some operating supplies, incentives, medical supplies, meeting supplies, manuals, other service fees, and then she has some equipment repair and maintenance, equipment rental, testing services, subscriptions, a lease, contractual services, and equipment.
And so, by keep, are we saying then that in the county, we don't have any other programs that would help people that would need these programs? For instance, the Parkview, are they not able to take on that additional, or...
I left, Amy, I left off all the Parkview.
Northeastern Center, I think we're giving them about 200,000, $200,000. I think Purdue just asked for an increase as well.
I left off...
We started these meetings with, this is going to be the hardest budget we've done in years because we just don't know what the future looks like with our finances, and I agree with that. And so, the part about being on council, sometimes you have to make hard decisions about where the dollars are going, and sometimes that involves good things are gonna have to be replaced just because we can't afford it. And I'm sure these are all great programs, but we started these meetings saying, "We're gonna have to save every single dollar that we can," and I don't hear us doing that. So I'm not sure, is this gonna be the hardest year we have for our budget? Do we not have any extra dollars? Or are we saying, yes, we have 300, we just gave away, we just added 30,000, and now we are asking for 226, so we actually do have 256,000 that we can move around? I'm just asking.
Well, that hasn't been decided yet. The 30,000, yeah, that most, we can do that.
Yep.
But this other amount has not been decided so that I can figure into whether we have it or not.
Actually, we're asking, how much was the ask total that you said?
308,062 is his total.
How much?
I didn't...
Added the JAM Center.
That was his total.
That's his total.
Oh.
Mine was 402,000.
And...
Cheryl's amount is 402,462 is what she needs.
And I do want to let you know that the first year, the grant was a lot less. So we got about half, all these entities got about half of this the first year. Then we got more because there was so much more money, and then none of us have applied for 26. Because we were told there wouldn't be, there would be no money. So, because the Y is one of these entities, and I'll be abstaining from any vote on this, but I just want everybody to know, we didn't get all of it. So anything we give St. Martin's or some of these things will be helpful.
We haven't decided on whether or not we give anybody any money yet, so you don't have to abstain quite yet.
Yeah, right, but if you do...
The fact, you know, I, this is not, I am not suggesting taking, making new money.
Right.
I am suggesting there is money that we're going to not spend because Sunny Meadows is being discontinued, and we take that money and move it over. We were previously providing for housing and living arrangements for DeKalb County residents. This would still apply to DeKalb County residents and their health. And I think it's our, one of our jobs is to promote the good health for our county and our citizens.
Correct. I think our current Health Department is doing a bang-up job doing that, and I don't know that we need to continue, in a year where we continue to say, "We don't have extra funds, we need to save." Okay, well, then let's follow through with that, and let's save these dollars for the big projects that you talked about yesterday. Then let's save for that, let's do that, let's take the Sunny Meadows money, and let's redirect that. I don't know that is our goal as a county to fund every good thing. There's lots of good things in this county, we can't ask the citizens to fund it all. The citizens continue to ask us to repair our roads, and I know I'm beating a dead horse on this, but we just voted as a council to raise taxes, which said, but now we're talking about we have additional dollars that we could have put somewhere else to help fund our roads, but we're not gonna do that. Instead, we're gonna fund these other things. It doesn't make sense in my mind, so, these are great programs. Please do not say that I voted against the children or the people or anything like that, because that's not right. But, man, we've got to look and say, okay, where do we stop? When does this end?
So, in my values that I gave you guys on the big, huge spreadsheet with the colored columns, I've already taken into account, because I reduced the Sunny Meadows budget, I've already taken into account that reduction. So that's already gone, and we are at the percentages that you see between 25 and 27 percent.
With these all at zero, with all of the Health Department...
That's not part of, that is currently not part of County General.
Oh, that's true.
But if, like Rick said, taking the part of the Sunny Meadows that we won't be needing, I've already accounted for that to be able to get to these values that we currently have. So there's not technically extra there because it will be going depending on the wage increases.
So, in this discussion, what I'm hearing is the most, it sounds to me like the most important thing might be the supplies that those school nurses are using, and maybe the mental health issues, which would bring it down quite a bit.
Well, you know, I look at this, we, highway departments keep coming up and up and up. Well, we want to invest in our roads and make our roads good, but why aren't we investing into our kids and their parents so that we aren't paying for them to be in jail throughout the community corrections?
Because it's not our job. The job of the county council is to keep the infrastructure of the county intact. That's our job, not anything else.
Well, we're not getting in that because, you know what, I think, yeah, that's fine. You say, "Take the money out of the general fund, give it to highway." What do you tell your constituency in Butler? Hey, I voted so you only get 2,000 instead of 75 or 80,000 dollars.
I put together yesterday...
You can't tell me what I'm gonna, that was correct or not. I'm looking for the kids and the, Cheryl came to me and says, "This is what we need to keep the program." I put it in front of you, if you tear it apart, fine, that's your opinion. I'm not gonna desert my neighbors and stuff who needs help.
Great, I don't want to desert them either. I offered two solutions yesterday on how to help fund the roads, and they were both shot down. So now I'm saying, well, if we need to look at helping our children, of course we do. But we have places, or we have different organizations in our communities that do that. The Health Department, our churches, we already have Northeastern Center, we have a Parkview Hospital. The schools have a lot of tax money that comes into them that they can also use some of their own tax dollars if they feel like mental health is an issue, then let them fund it. That's on them to help their own children in their schools. Our job as a county council is to take care of the infrastructure of the county, that's our job.
And I will disagree with you very strongly. Our job includes the people of this county as much as it does the infrastructure. It is our, that is the responsibility of government. It is our responsibility, so, and just leave it at that, you and I are gonna disagree on that.
We will, I'm glad you said it out loud.
And I did not include Parkview on any of my list here of what we should have because, quite honestly, Parkview has far enough, they don't need our tax money. They got enough money to build facilities in Marion and Lafayette and Ohio and God knows where else. They don't need our money.
Agreed.
But these other, these other facilities, these other programs do need our support. Now, do they need our support at 400,000, 20,000? I don't know, that's for us to determine, but the citizens of this county are our responsibility.
Well, I disagree. I have a question. The school nurse that was hired was part of this cap, correct?
Yes.
So, will her, because we're losing so much of this money, will her job change? And maybe Bill can answer this, because that's his department, no, okay, you already know where I'm going.
It's in her budget, that's one of her...
Covering her.
Okay.
Yeah, they're covering her wage and benefits.
Sure. So, my second tier here, looking at some of these places for the sub-grants, we also give them money through commissioner funds and other things. Is there a way we can put those together? Meaning, can we subtract in one area to help offset these programs so the hit isn't as much?
I...
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
For example, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just, I'm trying to think through this. Children First gets money in more than one line item in the county budget. Is that used for all of the same things? Or if they get money from the Health Department, is it used here? And they get money from commissioners or whatever other line item, is it used in another place? I guess what's the best use of our dollars? Can we subtract in one area to help somebody else and still keep those funds?
And that, I don't know. I don't know how they use the commissioner's allocations that the commissioner gives them.
I'm gonna throw out, because I haven't heard anybody mention this there. You know, we've got several items checked off here. There's nothing that says that we can't keep those, but we could reduce the funding by 25 percent or so on the council site. Still fund them, but we can reduce that amount like we have with everybody else.
All I'm, that's fine, I'm not arguing that point, but this is what they gave to me, and they listed a couple of things that, you know, like the nurse's supply and everything to the schools is number one, the Martin Heartway. So, we can, you know, I'm not against, you know, this could be reduced, this is what they come...
Well, I understand.
Yeah, this is what, if we wanted to keep the program going solvent for one more year, this is what we need. I mean, there's, like he said, he's been part of it, they came to him and said, "Don't worry about, we're gonna renew your contract next year and everything," so. And there's some of these, they won't, but, you know, like she's right. If we can take the Children First Center and let the commissioners sponsor it, or is that right? Am I saying that right?
The commissioners give allocation to them.
We don't need to give...
But then it's still helping those programs that were met.
And it still gives her some ways she can work with and help the community.
And I would like to, my support would go to those programs that are serving the schools and the kids. Amy's point is well-taken, that the schools do have their own tax money that they could use, but I want to point out, the biggest hit to any of the taxing units from SB 1 are the schools.
Yep, I agree with that.
They're the ones that are gonna get hurt the worst, and they're the ones that are going to have the least amount of increase coming into them. When I did the original, when I did the original calculations of what the hit was going to be to DeKalb County over the three-year period, 18 percent of the hit was gonna hit the county. 22 percent of the hit was going to hit the cities and towns. 48 percent of the hit was gonna hit the schools. The remainder was, the remainder, 3, 4, 5 percent was gonna be this solid waste district, the libraries and those things. But the schools are gonna get hit with 48 percent.
And I agree 100 percent, and the ones that are really gonna get hit is like Fort Wayne Community with a large inner-city population, and the kids that are gonna suffer here in our county are those kids in need that are from broken homes and low income and such like that. They're the ones that's gonna take the hit on this here.
I would like, I would like to at least, excuse me, at least support those programs that help the students in the schools.
So before we came into this, let's just, for lack of better words, this windfall of monies that we had the opportunity to have in front of us a couple of years ago, and now, and we knew that that would only maybe be for a time, now that those monies are being backed out, I agree with what you said, Amy, 100 percent. These are all great programs, I believe in all of them, I think they're fantastic programs. And while we had a good chunk of change, you know, after we won the lottery, per se, for the moment, that money's gone away. So, are we now responsible for continuing to help them because we helped them when we were in a good spot? That's really the question. It's not a question of whether they're important or not, we all know the answer to that, 100 percent. We may not agree that summer is important as the others, that's not the point. But, you know, we financed them more than we ever had before because we had the opportunity to, and that opportunity is being pulled away. Are we, do we still have to keep it at those levels? I don't think so, I don't think so. I would love to be able to fund them all 100 percent, I mean, that would be great. But, and I know that's just facetious for me to say that, but, you know, I think they knew that, right? The organizations knew that, that this maybe have been for the moment. Hopefully, they haven't set their whole budgets based on, you know, "We're gonna get these monies forever" because it was upfront. I mean, it was clear from the very beginning that that may not be the case.
And I just want to, this is a great conversation. This is why we're elected to be here, to prevent or to present these different opinions, and that's what everybody is doing here. And it's great, this is what the process is about. We're agreeing not to agree on everything, and I think this is exactly why every one of you is in these seats here. So, this is a great conversation, it is. We may not all agree, but we're bringing it out to the forefront. Good job, everybody, I mean that.
The hard part is, all of the hard work that went in, specifically the Health Department putting the plan together for these funds, and the planning, after everything they dealt with in 2020, and then it's, the rug's pulled out from underneath you, and you're, you know, looking at a deficit of, you know, $620,000 less that you just tried to implement the programming in your community, and, hey, we have this, but sorry, we gotta take your carrot away.
Well, I think in a paper today, Southwest Allen is looking at a $4.4 million hit. Basically, they were looking at $2 million, so it just gives you an idea, there's another 2.5 million that they're gonna have to cough up, and that's gonna hit every, as Rick said, every school corporation is getting the rug pulled out and slammed on top of their head on this stuff here. And Garrett and everybody else is gonna feel this.
They're gonna have to make those decisions internally as well, then, of how much do they fund these different kinds of projects versus making sure they pay their staff? I feel like we're in that very similar situation of...
And that's what we're gonna have to decide here as a council before we leave. You know, whether it's in a motion or whatever.
Correct.
So, not gonna be easy.
I have a question regarding, so that, and I know we've talked about it before, but this, the Northeast Indiana Mental Health, what, the DLGF number that they give us that we have to pay, is that something that, does it go to one place? Does it only go to, okay, it goes to Northeastern Center. So, looking at the application, this application sheet, there's $50,000 on it for Northeastern Center for the School-Based Mental Health Navigator. Would that be something that could be included or into that 449,000?
That's already spoken for and budgeted.
Okay.
That's part of their normal operation in years past, and it's probably changed by now. But when I first got on the council, I... But when I first got on the council, I was part of a committee statewide to determine what that money was being used for. At that time, it was being used for the Medicaid match that was required, um, through the state. So it is part of, it's been incorporated into their budgets for many, many years.
And, and please keep in mind, we do not have the windfall from Sunny Meadows. Susan has already integrated that into the budget towards any kind of raises, towards rainy day fund and everything. So we don't have that extra X amount of dollars to funnel in here. This is all going to have to be pulled from some other area here.
And, and so we will most likely need to whittle down the request. And I would like to at least promote the schools being the primary recipient of that. So it's going to, it's going to move it down quite a bit. But me, mental health, mental health is a big issue, even in this county. You don't realize it.
I mean, they're taking, all these things are taken care of because of the new programs, but I don't know that they necessarily just automatically, if they didn't have the HFI funding, I don't know that that's something that they act, just did.
And, you know, I know it's listed as Garrett and, and I'm assuming at this point, and without asking, I don't know the true answer to this, but the Northeast Center Navigator, I, I, hopefully that person is, is being utilized in all four school systems, not just one or the other. You know, they're doing something specifically for Garrett, is that something they should be doing for all four? Because what I don't want to do is if we do any kind of promotion or assistance, not single out one school system over another. Because I'm sure they're all in it.
I don't think it's just for Garrett, it just says, "School-based Mental Health Navigator."
Well, now that, I think, I think is, is all the school system, but I don't know the answer to that.
Right. Well, Amy was asking, the GKB School District, it was twelve thousand five hundred access center for students in need. It's two separate line items.
And that's the one I'm wondering, is that all the schools or just Garrett?
I'm guessing because it just says Garrett, it's just for Garrett. I mean, I don't know what the other schools do.
So if we were to fund that, I would want to make sure that was available for everybody.
Again, I, I feel like we're, we're trying to replace, we're, we're trying to just put these dollars towards that when we really do have in place programs in our community that, that can assist with these. And I feel like the state is trying to push down to us to tell us, hey, to Rick's point that he said earlier, hey, you gotta, you've got to figure out how to take care of all of your issues and the schools are going to, if there's issues in their schools that they need help with, the schools then should learn to, to figure those out. We may not have the funding to do that.
Well, I can tell you that if...
That would not be, I would not suppose that we do that.
Because of SB one, Amy, if they don't have the ability to do that through their property tax, they'll be coming to us for a local option income tax to, to replace that money.
Yeah.
So it's, it's going, it's going to end up falling back on the county council.
Well, when it, when that happens, we'll look at that, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, Rick.
So how about we go to something else? I have an email out to those that get money from the commissioners and the health department requesting that they let me know what they use the funding for. And I'm going to get some further clarification from Cheryl and Alyssa and...
Cheryl's not going to be answering.
I know, but she, she checks her email. And then I can let you know what they all say.
Why don't we go to lunch?
I'm thinking that's a good idea.
Do we have consensus to break?